Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco's channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poploski for their assistance with this meeting. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, November 10th. The first item on our agenda is public participation, and tonight no one has expressed interest in participating, but for future meetings, if anybody wishes to participate, please acknowledge your interest to the chairperson prior to the beginning of the next meeting on November 10th. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons and members' reports. Colleagues, any updates to report this week?
No.
Okay, great. There is no superintendent's report tonight as Dr. Sawyer is unable to attend our meeting tonight, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a time-scheduled appointment to accept a gift from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union to fund coordinators of development and volunteer activities, which will also require a vote per school committee policy 911. Gifts of $5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. We'll acknowledge the gift of $40,000 from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union to fund, as I mentioned, coordinator of development and volunteer activities positions. And a representative of Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union is with us tonight, Mr. Michael Hale, who is the community relations officer. And I'd ask him to come to the table along with Dr. Jane Lazzott, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Community Partnerships and Well-Being. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Sure.
It feels good to sit in this chair not bringing bad news on cable rates or some other municipal budgeting shortfall. So it's nice. So yeah, since I've retired from government service, I've been fortunate to take on a part-time role at the credit union doing some community relations work. And Dr. Lazzott has been in touch with the folks at the credit union and put in a request for funding for the Colonial Fund coordinators and volunteer coordinators, Michelle and Kathleen. And we are here this evening to tell you that we think that is a wonderful idea, and we're a mission-driven organization, and our mission is to give back to our members when we can, but also to the community at large. And this really is an extension of a private-public partnership that we have had with the school department for several years and funded several initiatives that they've asked for and requested for. And the only other thing I'd like to say really is, during my time in this building, going back 10 or 12 years, I've had numerous conversations with Dr. Sawyer, Patrick Collins, Dr. Lazzott about the need and why isn't it commonplace in public schools to have a so-called endowment fund or a planned-giving program for public schools that you see more prevalent in college institutions and independent private schools? I always thought that many people, myself included, are as impacted by their time and their experiences and information and development they get from a high school teacher as they are from any college activity that they may. And so why don't people give back to their high school? And so we've had these conversations about building and building an organization, and certainly Dr. Sawyer has taken that on as one of his priorities, and Jane has taken on a lot of that work over the last three years. And it's getting there. And so I look at this opportunity as we're going to give $40,000 to fund the coordinator's positions so that that money that is raised isn't used to overhead and salaries, and it can be used towards the programs that you all need and that are more important. So I met with both Kathleen and Michelle this week. We spent a couple hours talking about different initiatives we might see coming down the pipeline. So we plan to work cooperatively together in the future, and hopefully we'll be here more often than not.
And I'd like to thank the credit union not only for their financial donations, which are greatly appreciated, and I'll share just a couple of ways. Kathleen Cohen and Michelle Biscotti have been working, putting forth great effort to benefit our students and staff, but also their presence, when I call presence, C-E, for participation in endeavors, including the Colonial Connections Board, on which Jim DuPont and Lisa Raby have been members over the past couple of years. This Friday, Michael has graciously offered to join a group of business leaders, trades people. We have 10 to 12 people coming to the high school to have a conversation regarding ways in which we can further engage our students from freshman year through senior year to talk about whether it's school-to-career, school-to-trade, school-to-college opportunities, but how is it that we can best support our students as they're seeking to explore things there in which they're interested? Whether that be a trade, whether that be, you know, a position in the medical field. So the credit union-
Or the credit union.
Or the credit union, or Selco. Jackie Pratt is coming, actually. But I never get a no when I ask for help, and truly, we are so appreciative of the financial support, but almost more so the advice, the participation in this work, which is critical to, you know, the academic and mental, social-emotional well-being of our students. But Kathleen and Michelle, just a couple of highlights during their time and their roles. They've raised $1.8 million for the turf field at Shrewsbury High School. They've raised over $365,000 for the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Some of that money went towards updating the TV production studio, giving it a state-of-the-art, high-definition capacity and capability. They, the funds created and purchased all new equipment for the design lab at Oak Middle School. Last spring, they organized the first-ever telethon to raise $35,000 for the performing arts. Money has gone towards purchasing books, curriculum materials, smart boards, et cetera, to enhance classroom learning, social-emotional learning, et cetera. This year, they're continuing their fundraising efforts to support our two strategic priorities, although well four, to a great degree, the two being learning environments where everyone's success matters and enhanced well-being of all. Again, through, with a focus on continued support for social-emotional programming, diversity and equity, in addition to creative programming for all learners. We know that while some of our students are in the know as far as what opportunities exist out there, there's a whole lot of students who don't know, either because caretaker doesn't know, or, you know, perhaps they haven't learned from teachers or announcements or communication. So we're really actively seeking ways to engage all students with that equity lens and working with the credit union, who also gave us a van for some of this activity. Maybe they'll give us another one down the road. Because what gets in the way oftentimes is transportation for our students, particularly those who-
She's not the first to ask.
Don't have, and she'll keep asking. So I thank Michael Hale, and I thank Jim DuPont and the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, and Kathleen and Michelle for their outstanding efforts.
Excellent. Great. Thank you for the presentation and generosity. Colleagues, any comments or questions? Ms. Fritz?
Congratulations to Michael. I think I was the community advocate. I read that you were in this new role, and I think it's wonderful because you know the community, you know a lot about the needs of our schools. So I'm really happy to see this partnership continuing. And, you know, Jim DuPont has always been great. Anytime we ask for something, you know, we're getting a significant amount of funding at a time when we really need it, and this is this continued partnership. And it's great to hear about, you know, coming into the schools. I know last Tuesday evening, the table I was at when we were with SLT, that was exactly one of the things we were talking about, like having people come in and talk about what do we need, what do, you know, moving forward as a community for students, looking at education and the next step. So there's a lot of things that are going on. So thank you very much for what you're doing in your retirement. It doesn't sound like you're not busy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. McGee?
So it's refreshing to have a conversation in which we're not just putting out the latest COVID fire, but rather elevating the quality of education we're giving to our students to a higher level than we had before. I really am pleased to see us focusing more on careers and shining a bright light on that whole concept for students rather than simply going on to college. I have a question for Dr. Lazzott. Does the Colonial Fund now have a, is it a trust fund or, you know, an endowment, or are we just spending the money as it comes in?
That's a very good question. Maybe Mr. Collins can help me. We are working to, well, do you want to answer the endowment fund question?
Sure.
Okay. You have a microphone.
Sure. No, I would just, so right now, the funds that come into the Colonial Fund are put into a separate, what's called the special revenue fund, and segregated for the exclusive use of the Colonial Fund purposes. Because we live in the world of municipal finance in Massachusetts, right now, those funds are not, are managed by the town treasurer's office. The town treasurer has responsibility for cash management, and there's really not, I don't believe, an opportunity to set aside funds separately for investment purposes unless it's done through the town treasurer. So that might be, you know, for a future conversation, but it's not as if, for example, alternatively, some of their communities create nonprofit organizations, and then there's more latitude to manage funds that way, but then you lose control. So we have total positive control as a school department, but it does limit kind of the investment options, if you will.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Thank you very much for the generosity, as we've always talked about during these meetings. I mean, this funding is so critical to our operation as a school district. Anytime we can expand our reach beyond the appropriated budget is definitely very helpful to the district, so thank you so much for the generosity.
And we look forward to exploring additional and new opportunities as well.
Definitely.
And one additional thank you. We have teachers, directors and leaders who have been working very hard to put together proposals for projects pre-K through 12. We've, we've had quite a few come through that are just eye-opening, seeking colonial funds to support them. And it takes a good amount of thought, effort and time to do that, in addition to all the work that is already happening, which is unusually taxing at this time. So we're grateful to those people, and we look forward to sharing how those dollars are spent this year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Colleagues, as I mentioned, this will require a committee vote, so I need a motion that the school committee vote to accept a gift of $40,000 from the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union to fund the coordinator of development and volunteer activities positions for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is also a time-scheduled appointment, and it will be an update on the district's response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Here to present to the committee tonight is our Director of School Nursing, Ms. Noelle Freeman. Ms. Freeman?
Hi, thank you. So I am just going to update you all on some statistics and district data, as Dr. Sawyer typically does. I know I have big shoes to fill this evening, so I will do my best to lead you through these slides. So we'll start with our primary goal, which is to provide full-time in-school learning for students with minimal disruptions while using mitigation strategies to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19. Our approach to this involves implementing mitigation strategies that reduce the risk of transmission of the virus, creating a sense of belonging and supporting students' social, emotional and mental health needs, and of course, providing learning opportunities that support students' academic needs. So taking a look at the most recent statistics related to COVID, we'll start with the Johns Hopkins Resource Center data. The positivity rate for the state is currently at 1.76%, which is slightly up from the 1.68% the last time we looked at this, but it still puts Massachusetts in the second lowest spot in the country and well below that 5% benchmark. Looking at cases in Massachusetts by age, the numbers for 0- to 19-year-olds are actually down as compared to the last report, but again, the 10- to 19-year-old age bracket is seeing more cases than other age groups across the state. Next is the hospitalization rates by age groups, which continues to be very low for children of all ages across the state. And while we recognize that the number is not zero, where we, ideally it would be, the fact that it remains low is reassuring to us. Looking at town-level data, the 14-day positive test rate for Shrewsbury is 2.25. Again, like the state rate, it's up just slightly from the last time we reported, but it's still less than half of the 5% benchmark. So continuing with local context, this slide just shows us the number of cases in Shrewsbury each week since October 1st, and then the correlating number of Shrewsbury Public School students during that week who were identified with COVID. So you can see that the week that ended October 8th, there were 52 positive cases in town, and we had 22 positive students that week. To date, that is our peak at 22 students in a week, and we hope that that remains our peak. Last week, there were 47 cases in town and 16 in our school. So if we look at that 16 students as a percentage of our over 6,000 students, that's a 2.26% of our student population were diagnosed with COVID in that week. We don't have town numbers for this week yet. Those are reported on Friday, but to date at school, we have six student cases. This slide just gives you a little bit more information about the current case count in schools. These numbers include both students and staff. So cases this week, our total is nine, combination of students and staff. There were four cases so far this week where individuals have been in school during their infectious periods of required contact tracing. There have been two cases that were traced to possible in-school exposure. Cumulative totals from the first day of school, we have 109 cases throughout the district since September 1st. We've 86 of those, this individual has been in school during their infectious period and required contact tracing, and we are up to 19 possible exposures in school. I just want to mention that possible in-school transmission has been, at this point, seen in just about all of our buildings at some point in the year. We are seeing it across different settings, which is to say that we have not seen a pattern of transmission in any particular setting, such as lunch where kids are unmasked and sitting closer together. That was a concern at the beginning of the year. We are not seeing that play out as of now. We are, at this point, just continuing to monitor the situation. We're continuing to communicate with public health colleagues as needed and promoting our mitigation strategies on a, you know, daily basis with everyone in the buildings. This slide is just a reminder that all of this data is available on the district website, on the COVID data dashboard. The data is updated weekly on Mondays, so anyone who's looking for an update can check the website at any time. This is just a breakdown of our case counts by buildings. As you can see, the most of our, the majority of our cases are happening at the upper-grade levels, which is correlates with the state data, where we're seeing most cases in that 10- to 19-year-old population. You'll also see that there's a district building listed here. That category is, actually covers lots of people in the district, like me, who are not really associated with one particular building, but throughout the day or the week, we could be in any of the buildings. So we have kind of our own category for case counts. Just a quick update on test and stay. As you know, the program began mid-September. It's an optional program that requires consent to the state testing program for participation. People are eligible to participate in test and stay if they've been identified as a close contact to a case in school only. The procedure involves testing with the Binax Now Rapid Antigen Test at our test site each morning, and people who are eligible are informed of which days they need to participate, and that goes up till their day seven after their last exposure to the positive individual. Anyone who's negative and has no symptoms can attend school that day, and anyone who's positive is instructed to return home and contact their school nurse for further information and to begin the Department of Public Health isolation protocols. So far, we've had 27 days of testing, 27 school days where testing has been in play. In that time, we've had over 400 individuals participate in the program. We've had over 1,000 tests administered. We've had 14 positive test results to date, 1.2% positivity rate. And again, that's just proof that the program is working to identify asymptomatic individuals and have them begin the isolation protocols and prevent further spread at school or in the community. Probably most importantly is the now over 1,000 student learning days that have been preserved by people participating in the program and being able to attend school after testing negative. I do just want to thank a minute, take a minute to thank the people who have been involved in this program, including the parents who are being notified on a given day that their child has been identified as a close contact to someone in school, and parents have quickly made changes to their morning routines to bring their children to the test site, which we appreciate is a challenge. A change to any daily schedule can be challenging, but especially that kind of morning tight squeeze to get everybody out the door if you need to do this testing. We know that that can be a challenge and want to recognize that. I also want to thank the crew that's working at the test site. They've handled on some days more than 100 individuals who need testing in order to stay at school, and this is all happening between the hours of 6:45 and 9:00 a.m. So they're up bright and early and working very efficiently to move people through the test site and get them to school. And of course, I have to give a shout-out to my nurses who are identifying the students or staff who are eligible for the program through contact tracing. They're communicating the program details to families and then tracking those individuals for sometimes several school days, making sure that people are tested and test negative before they come to school, and then, of course, following up on any positive cases to instruct families on those protocols. So the program has clearly been a really important, a big part of our efforts to minimize disruptions to student learning, and I just wanted to recognize that it couldn't be in place without the efforts and dedication of all of those people. Finally, just an update on the routine COVID safety testing, formerly known as pool testing. Again, this is an optional program through the state testing program. It's a weekly at-home test, which I'm happy to say has now switched over for everyone. All the students and staff who are involved are now back to doing a shallow nasal swab instead of the less preferred saliva test that was in place for the first few weeks of the program. So the program has been in place since the end of September. We do not have yet hard numbers from the lab as to how many tests have been processed. We have had nine positive test results from pool testing. So again, just a reminder of how important the program is in working to identify people who are unknowingly positive because they're asymptomatic and potentially transmitting the virus. So this helps us to limit that in, again, both the schools and the larger community. So thank you to all the people who are participating in this program as well. So just to review our primary goal, it's to provide full-time in-school learning for students with minimal disruptions while using mitigation strategies to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions if anyone has them.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Questions? Ms. Evern?
Yeah, thank you so much, and I really continue to appreciate all the transparency, even though we are all tired of talking about COVID. It's really important that we stay vigilant. My questions revolve around the COVID, the routine COVID surveillance testing, and I know you said we don't have data from the lab. It was, it has always been a point of note for us, what level of participation we think we're getting, and, and so do we know what, how many consents have been signed? Or, you know, I don't, there's a difference between consenting to the program and then actually doing the thing every week and doing that done?
Right.
Do we have any sense of scale, and maybe even how it compares to last year and what we were looking at? I know those are different pools.
I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
Ms. Yu has more access to those numbers? Do you happen to know Mr. Collins off the top of your head?
The only thing that I could say is that most recently, I think this week, my understanding is, is that we had somewhere between 1,700 and 1,800-
Okay.
-samples taken, and that's a combination of both staff and students.
Okay.
We have far more consents than those numbers.
Yeah.
And so we're thinking that some parents and some staff have selected, because it's a universal consent form, that they've consented for, you know, likely, or not likely, but potential participation in the test and stay program, but not so much interested in the weekly surveillance testing. And then the other piece that I will add, and for those that might actually be watching instead of the Red Sox game tonight, is that there might have been some reluctance initially for participating because we were using a saliva test. And as of this week, we've been able to work with the laboratory and completely switch over to, back to nasal swab testing, which we were doing previously with the other company. So we're all nasal swab testing now, and certainly at any point in the school year, folks can still consent and participate, or if they've already consented, they can start, you know, participating in the nasal swab testing on any of the given weeks. So we're hopeful that, you know, maybe some of the numbers will climb as the nasal swab testing really kind of rolls out and parents start to talk about it more.
Can I blow up? I think it's a, it's a really important and relatively quite easy way for us to keep tabs on what's happening in our, in our schools, and so I would continue to urge the district to get the word out there. As we get closer to winter, it's getting chillier, the holidays, the gatherings, this is a wonderful way for us to make sure that our buildings are as safe as they can be. I guess there is, I think, a little bit of confusion in the, in the parent community about the difference, the switch between the saliva and the nasal. My family likes the nasal. Not everyone does, right? But, but the, just the processes are a little different than last year. There's QR codes scanned and signatures and some stuff that just feels, you know, we're all getting like tired of the thing changing all the time, but maybe you could talk about why some of those changes are happening, and if that's driven by folks in your office who are trying to do that, if it's coming from the lab, if it's coming from different funding sources, there's a, and I would encourage any parents who are watching, maybe later, not tonight, to know that some of this is very much out of our control, but, but that we're not just sort of throwing up barriers or hoops for people to jump through.
Right. So we did start with saliva testing this year because it was the only option through the state program for a test that could be done at home. And as a district, we had made the decision that doing the at-home test to preserve student learning time was our preference. So the only, again, the only option that was available for an at-home test was the saliva test. We had talked to the lab about our preference being a nasal swab, just based on last year's experience. That did not become available until two weeks ago from the lab. So as soon as it did, we also got a lot of feedback from families and from staff about having much more difficulty doing the saliva collection than the nasal swab. So we, as soon as it was available, we rolled it out to staff and then to students this past week. So everyone should be participating in that. It, I agree, there have been lots of changes. We appreciate everyone's patience. We're really listening to feedback from the users of the tests to make changes, to make the program better. And we are in pretty constant communication with the laboratory themselves and the folks on the Department of Education side of things to just keep improving the program. So the things like having to write your name on the tube and there being confusion about that, we're, we're trying to get some more clear instructions available on the test kits and some other resources, like videos for people to watch if that's helpful for them. So we're, we're kind of building the program as we go based on feedback. But we do appreciate people kind of hanging in there and being patient as we make those improvements.
Thank you.
Further comments, Dr. McGee?
Just a couple of questions. One is, of the fourteen positive test and stays, were, could any of them have been picked up in those pooled results as well? Could they have showed up twice?
They did. There are a few that are duplicated there. So some of them, so for example, if we submit pool testing on Tuesday, but we don't get those results until Thursday evening, we did have people who happened to end up in test and stay. And they tested positive kind of in that window of waiting for the results to come back.
Okay. And my second question is, do we have follow-up on our positives at all? Do we know among the people who have tested positive within our district, whether any have been hospitalized or like?
We do. Well, to my knowledge, there has not been any severe illness, fortunately, in staff or students that have.
So so far, for one-plus years or whatever, we've had no hospitalizations?
So this school year, there have been no hospitalizations. I'm aware of one hospitalization last year and a couple of people who required some like emergency room kind of follow-up, but were not admitted to the hospital. So a few people who, who had some more severe symptoms. Again, that was last year kind of pre-vaccine. Now we're seeing much more mild illness for the most part.
Thanks.
Additional comments or questions? Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Freeman. I also like to acknowledge the outstanding work of our school nurses. I think a lot of times when we go through this data, it is, should be noted that they've had to manage many facets of health and safety during the pandemic in addition to their day-to-day, right, which we know is oftentimes unpredictable. So I appreciate their commitment, their dedication to the district, the long hours that they're providing just to keep our staff and students safe and certainly to minimize those disruptions that we talk about for in-person learning. I also appreciate the test and stay program. It does really seem like it's showing some really significant results in the thousand-plus hours of, of in-person learning that's been preserved. And then the COVID safety tests, I can tell you from the reviews I get from the software in my house, they very much appreciate the switch to the swab testing. So I think, I think that'll go a long way too, to, to the voluntary testing that we'll see in the future. So so thank you for everything that you presented and everything that your team is doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is under policy. As you know, colleagues, in our last meeting, committee engaged in discussion regarding the potential for an implementation of a policy mandating COVID-19 vaccinations for staff. All school committee members expressed support for such a policy and charge the administration with drafting a policy document, which is enclosed in your packets. The draft policy mandates all Shrewsbury Public Schools employees provide proof of vaccination against COVID-19 by December first, 2021, and provides two categories of potential exemption from this mandate. One being documented medical reasons and the other being due to sincerely held religious beliefs. Now, if the committee were to choose to approve this policy tonight, the implementation and impact of the policy must be bargained with the employee associations. Here tonight to answer questions and engage in discussion is our executive director of human resources, Ms. Barb Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. So as you know, you've been, had a chance to read the draft copy of the policy. It is, you know, relatively straightforward. And I think the details will be more in the impact bargaining with the various associations. We're working hard on processes for verifying staff vaccination. I want to especially thank Mr. Collins and Mr. LaRue, who's also here tonight for the work that they are doing behind the scenes in the event the school committee moves forward with this policy. So I'm available to answer any questions you might have about it. And I'm open to any remarks.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Malone. Questions, Mr. Pouch?
Just a comment. First, I want to thank Ms. Malone for her work in putting this together. I support the draft, as is before us. I think that this draft reflects the conversation that this body had at our previous meeting. And I'll just reiterate briefly a comment that I made at our last meeting, which is that we have always had higher standards for safety inside public school buildings. I recognize that there is a broader conversation taking place in society about mandatory vaccines in other settings. And just remind members of the public and all of our stakeholders that we're not talking about restaurants, movie theaters, or shopping facilities. We're talking about our public schools where our students are required to be, where we have always, in every context, had a higher standard for keeping those inside those buildings safe. So I do support the policy in front of us.
Any other comments, Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, along with my colleague, Mr. Pouch, I also want to thank you for the work. I appreciate that this is a year in which there is, there's a lot of continuing stressors. And, you know, we, you were here a couple of weeks ago talking about hiring. We're going to talk about substitute teachers tonight. This is not without impact on our, on our schools, and I can appreciate that, that there may be staff who, who make choices that don't fall in line with this, with this potential policy. But that being said, I, I think it's the right move for us to be making as a, as a district. I think it's not only, as I said before, that do we require children to be in our buildings? We have children who are medically vulnerable, who need to be in our buildings. And so whatever, whatever levers that we have to pull to make our buildings safe, I think we've been trying diligently for the last eighteen months to pull them. And this is, this is one that I think we now have in front of us. We've seen other districts do it. We've seen other employers do it. We've seen the state do it. And so I don't think we're getting out, getting out ahead of anybody. We are kind of learning as we go. And and I think it's the right time and place for us to move forward with this.
Thank you. Ms. Free.
And I also agree with this draft and the information contained within it. And I just want to reiterate my own personal belief is I agree with personal choice and anyone's, if they want to choose whether or not to have vaccination, that is their personal choice. But as we look at the, our mission and our goal is to continue by law to educate students within the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And our goal is to keep the schools open and safe. And as we worked with all of our staff and union groups last year to reopen our schools, the number one comment we heard repeatedly from those groups was health and safety. And again, this is the, the main tool that we will have to do that. And it does provide these two exemptions for medical or religious exemptions. So I do fully support this.
Dr. McGee?
I agree with my colleagues. I think that this is a safety issue and that we have an obligation to our staff and to our students to make this environment as safe as possible. So I completely agree with everything that's been said. I would add a couple of things. One is that I want the implementation to be as stress-free and, and successful as possible. And I think that when people are considering the possibility of, should they object? Should they seek an exemption or whatever? That once they make that decision and start moving down that road, they have an emotional commitment to move forward with what they're, they're thinking about. And I would like to be able to provide as much reliable, good quality information as possible because one of the other issues that we are fighting right now is a lot of misinformation or bad information that people are using to make decisions. The CDC has a list of medical exemptions. And I think that providing that list and saying, this is what the CDC says as of such and such a date, is a very reasonable thing. I also think that while the number of different religions are too numerous to count and we can't provide a comprehensive list, that there are a number of religions that have come out and said that they have no objection to or approve or encourage vaccination. And by providing a list that would account for, let's say, ninety-five percent of our populace, which is, you know, not that many, different religions, that we would provide information for people and provide them with reassurance, with good information upfront before they get themselves in a position where they're starting to insist on something that may be based on less than good information. So I would like to see that happen. The other thing is just from a point of view of policies on policy, I think there's value to being able to say that this is in place for five years. I, I'm reluctant to put in place policies that are in place until rescinded because we have so many that we end up with things that have been in there for twenty years and they're just rattling around and nobody saw them before. And by putting an expiration date on it, it allows us to revisit the question and say, you know, five years or sooner would be, in my opinion, a better approach.
Thank you. I do echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I agree with the policy as written, certainly along with Dr. McGee's recommendation to put that five-year timeline. It is consistent with other school committee policies that we have to revisit policies within five years' time. So there's some consistency there. But at the, at the end of the day, this is about the health and safety of our school community. And it's very important to mitigate any future drawbacks to in-person learning. So I do support this policy. I'd like to thank Ms. Malone for the draft policy. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Collins and Mr. LaRue, you know, for the logistical planning and secure and safe execution of this policy. So thank you so much for the work that's gone into this.
So do we need to make any amendments to this? How, what is the best way to execute?
I could just suggest, I, I agree with Dr. McGee's suggestion. So if you look at the language of the policy under item four, I would suggest, Dr. McGee, that after this policy will remain in place, I would suggest in between the words "place" and "until" we insert "for a period of five years" or "until." The reason I suggest keeping that in place is because I, I would favor keeping the rest of that sentence still in place. We might just update it based on public health guidance.
Agreed.
I would move that the school committee adopt the policy as proposed with the addition of the following language under item four, that after the phrase "this policy will remain in place," that after the word "place," for it, we insert "for a period of five years" or, and then the word "until," and the rest as written.
Okay.
Can I just repeat that? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I got, I got your, you said that one more time.
So yes, under item four, my motion is that we, we accept the policy as proposed with the amendment. Then under item four, after this policy will remain in place, we insert the following, "for a period of five years or..."
Got it. Thank you.
And then leave the rest as written.
And with regard to the information sheet, does that, is that something that we can feel will be carried out without it being put in the policy? Or what is your read on that?
My suggestion would be not to include it in the policy. That's based on a conversation that I had with the school committee's attorney.
Are you going to do it?
I think that that's something we need to discuss as part of impact bargaining.
Well, the, so are you saying that informing people of the current status of guidelines from religions in the CDC is something that has to be impact bargained?
I think that we can certainly share information that's publicly available and let people know where the resources are that they can use. I would hesitate to create any of our own information about that. But certainly to use standard resources makes sense.
Barb, could you explain, I know you mentioned it earlier, is it Title VII Civil Rights?
Yes, Title VII. And so there's a great deal of information out. I was reviewing a good amount of it even before this meeting this evening. And there is a lot of advice on how to handle religious requests and how to handle medical requests. And they do need to be dealt with, particularly the medical requests need to be dealt with as individual questions under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And they have to be discussed with the individual on an individual basis in an iterative discussion based on information from their physician or medical person. So that's the guidance from our attorney. And so that's, that's the guidance I would recommend to the school committee. In terms of religion, people still have individual religious rights, even if their religious leaders have a different view. And so we will need to navigate through that on a case-by-case basis. But there's no problem with sharing the information that's publicly available. And I certainly understand, Dr. McGee, that you're trying to make things easier for people.
I would like to see one page. I just, in my opinion, it cools things down and it's not hard. I hate to get it buried in legal limbo.
Questions on that?
I have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Wasn't seconded, but.
I seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting policy three ninety-four COVID-19 staff vaccination policy with the amendment stated, please do so by saying aye.
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 And the motion carries unanimously. Great. Thank you so much, Malone. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, it is under finance and operations with regards to substitute teacher pay rates. This will also require a vote. So colleagues, like many districts in the area and across the nation, Shrewsbury Public Schools is facing a labor shortage for substitute teachers. The effects of fewer available substitutes is compounded by greater absenteeism resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. Ms. Malone, Mr. Collins are here, are here to discuss particular areas of concern and propose a rate adjustment to address them. And we'll be available to take questions. And there's been a memo included in the packet that acknowledges this. So Ms. Malone, I guess I'll hand it back to you to discuss.
Sure. We'd like to propose rate adjustments to move day-to-day subs from ninety dollars a day to a hundred dollars a day. And that we would also like to introduce a pay rate for individuals who are dedicated full-week substitute teachers at a hundred and forty dollars per day. That's in exchange for their commitment to be available to substitute for our district on a daily basis. Of course, barring illness, but on, making a commitment on a daily basis. We would look for the rates to be effective on November first if the school committee were in support.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions or comments?
Completely support this. Very reasonable. I hope it's successful in accomplishing what we needed to. My question, though, is there an anticipated impact on our budget here? We have, we costed this out with typical estimated use of substitutes?
Yes, we have costed it out. And I'm going to ask Mr. Collins to speak to that.
Sure. I'd be happy to. So with respect to the day-to-day subs and the remainder of the school year, we did an analysis to try to project what the amount of absences might be based upon multiple years of prior year data. And so raising the rate from ninety dollars to a hundred dollars per day would have a net impact of, we were projecting of approximately fifty-six thousand to fifty-seven thousand dollars. With respect to the, the concept of having a quote, "full-time, dedicated, day-to-day substitute teacher who's willing to work every day of the remainder of the school year," costed that out as well. And based upon using six so-called building substitutes for the remainder of the school year, would be a net additional cost of approximately forty-one thousand dollars. So those two combined, you know, are approaching the hundred thousand dollar mark. I believe that, you know, this can be funded probably in two ways. I would look first and foremost toward the use of remaining COVID grant dollars to support this, which is an eligible use of those funds. And we have sufficient funding to do that from those COVID grants. And then secondarily, depending on how our operating budget plays out in terms of our overall town appropriation and how all those other costs come into play, there may be some opportunity for dollars there. But we're not going to know that until way closer to the end of the fiscal year. So the plan would be to use COVID grants at the outset.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Palich?
Just for the benefit of those watching, Ms. Malone, do I understand correctly that in addition to the tight labor market right now, that there is a particular neighboring district that's a little bit ahead of us in terms of their rate that's making this difficult and necessary right now?
Correct. We have a neighboring district that is paying the recommended amount of $100 per day and that is creating some competitive disadvantage for us because, you know, the driving is not significant between the two districts. That would cause one to go to one or the other in preference, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Fritz?
I appreciate you bringing this forward. We're seeing this in our MASC Daily Mail, that this is an issue throughout the state trying to find subs for various reasons. And even it's people who used to sub are maybe older retirees and not really, more worried about their health right now with COVID and not coming in. So I think this is really a proactive way to, you know, try to fix this the best we can and looking at, again, kind of a market, labor market, where we do have neighboring areas that are higher and taking care of it now instead of waiting, where we might have to do this down the road anyway. So I think this is really a proactive approach, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Heffernan, yeah?
And just one question, somewhat following my colleague's other question. Is it fair to say that full-week substitutes that are dedicated to a building, you see no problem having that level of need? That our need for substitutes is so high that we now need someone assigned to the buildings every day as a way to mitigate? Because there will always be somebody out or something happening, that that's the experience that you and the building principals are seeing?
Yes, for example, at the elementary level, which is something I look at every single day, we have as much as 75% of our positions unfilled if somebody is out.
Okay.
So it's very significant. And so the thought was maybe the smaller schools could share somebody and the larger schools would have a dedicated person for that school. But we are seeing purely with people who have been maybe exposed outside of school or, you know, they have seasonal allergies or cold, but it appears to mimic COVID symptoms, at least in the beginning, needing to take a day or two off. And that sort of situation is prevalent enough that we would need the people every single day.
Given, we understand the incredible need to be, I am also fully in support. I think it's really reasonable. I think we need to always be asking questions if we're staying in market, and so I thank you for bringing this forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Collins, yeah?
Mr. West, if I could just add one more point, which I think is relevant, and that is this $90 rate was last voted by the school committee in November or the fall of 2018. So it's been three years since this rate has been adjusted. And certainly that's different than all of our other employee, whether they're part of organized labor or non-union, who typically have some sort of, typically, but not always have some sort of annual rate increase. So it's been three years since this rate has been adjusted.
Great, thank you, Mr. Collins. I am in support of his recommendation as well. I appreciate Ms. Malone and Mr. Collins bringing this forward. Very important to stay competitive. We certainly talked a lot about the challenges with bringing in substitutes throughout the pandemic. So thank you, thank you very much. Colleagues, this will require us to vote, so I need a motion that the committee vote to approve the rate adjustments for day-to-day and dedicated full-week substitute teachers as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda is also under Finance and Operations. It's regarding the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar. It will also require a vote. Mr. Collins is here to present the budget calendar, which is enclosed in the booklet. And this calendar was reviewed by Dr. McGee and Ms. Heffernan, who comprise our Fiscal Projection Subcommittee. And we'll review it now with Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westky. So as you mentioned, in your booklet is a proposed fiscal '23 budget calendar. It's hard to believe that we're actually thinking about already next fiscal year, but this is the usual time to do that. And the way that this is laid out, a little bit differently than years past, is kind of on the left side of the calendar is some of the major school department milestones in terms of budget development, meetings with other elected officials, and then all kind of leading up to the annual town meeting next May. On the right-hand side of this table is information that pertains to what happens on a kind of a parallel path is the development of the town or municipal overall budget from the town manager's office and Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. So just want to pull out a couple of highlights here without kind of reading through the whole thing, but the, a couple of relevant points are that this month of October is when we're actually doing a lot of, beginning to do lots of work around the nitty-gritty of developing next year's budget, like salary forecast, transportation, out-of-district tuition. So all that's beginning now. And it, you know, continues on into November, December, and January timeframe. In terms of a couple of highlights, like November 9th, it's important to note that the town manager will be making an update to the Board of Selectmen and to the town barge about the current fiscal year, the first quarter, and how revenues and expenses are shaping up overall as a town. And he'll also then be producing what's called his Fiscal '23 Revenue Manual, which provides revenue estimates for the upcoming fiscal year. We do have a separate topic after the calendar is the school committee's voted budget priorities and guidelines for us as administrative team to work on. And so you're giving us guidance about what is important and relevant for the upcoming year. And then the other piece in November, later November, November 23rd, is Mr. Mizikar will be making a presentation to the Board of Selectmen and, again, the community at large of his updated five-year financial forecast and also presentation of financial policies that he's been working on or will be working on with the Board of Selectmen. We did have a brief conversation, I put in the box here, that of course we have this new compact between yourselves and the Board of Selectmen based upon the override commitment to the community about how we're going to operate going forward. And included in there were two meetings where the Board of Selectmen would get together with the school committee and talk about finances. And so that first meeting, I believe, right now is penciled in for November 23rd, so that the ask is that the school committee would have attendance at the Board of Selectmen meeting, listen to that five-year updated forecast and the financial policies, and then have any of that kind of ensuing discussion that you might want to have. So that's kind of new for the fiscal '23 year. In December, we have scheduled a school committee workshop on December 8th. In January, we'll hear the governor's budget come out. We've got another school committee workshop in later January. And then it's scheduled for February 11th, that the town manager will produce his first fiscal '23 budget called Fiscal Projection 1. And then Dr. Sawyer will present his recommended, recommended school department budget on February 16th. In March, we have public hearing for the community who might want to speak about the budget. We've got a variety of different reports. March 26th is a Saturday, kind of traditional meeting with the Finance Committee. And then moving into April, it's a little bit of wait-and-see with what happens again on the state level, with the state budget process and state aid. And then we have scheduled for you, April 13th, a final vote on the fiscal '23 budget. So all of this is wrapping up in the middle of April. And right now, there, as I understand it, and this could have changed as of the writing here, but my understanding that two dates are being floated for the annual town meeting right now, Saturday, May 14th, or kind of the more traditional pattern of pre-COVID, Monday, May 16th. So those are plenty of items to put in your planning calendars and whatnot, but happy to respond to any questions or concerns that, or input around the calendar that the committee might have at this particular point before you vote on it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Collins. Colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Fritz?
One thing I'd suggest, and I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about it, we did it last year with the Finance Committee, and I know it was a little different because of the override, where we did have a one-on-one kind of meeting with the Finance Committee to talk about what our budget was and why we were looking for that. And I know they do have three new members this year, so it might be nice to do that again, to have kind of that between February 16th and March 26th short meeting with them to kind of go over our budget before our Saturday meeting. I think it helped frame the meeting for that Saturday. So I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I thought that was, and I know they appreciated it, so I don't, suggestion.
Ms. Heffernan?
I certainly would second that as a, would be additive to all of this. I think what I take away from this calendar is maybe most important is just this idea of some greater transparency between our budgeting process and the town's budgeting process and the idea of the joint meetings being a way to, and really using that override stabilization fund to understand how are we doing and where are we going to be. So while we're planning for, appropriately planning for fiscal '23, that in reality we're planning for '24 and '25 at the same time as we understand sort of where, what the revenues look like and what's happening. So I'm very excited and certainly also agree with the idea of a meeting with the Finance Committee and anything we can do to help them understand, given the, given that we are the, you know, the 100-pound gorilla of the town budget, that makes, that makes sense.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Collins. I do agree with the recommendation of meeting with the Finance Committee in advance of the formal hearing. I think that makes sense, not only just to give them a preview of what's coming, but also, you know, obviously in interest of transparency and, you know, just kind of staying focused to kind of this new world order of budget under the, under the override, you know, guidelines that we drafted with the Board of Selectmen. So very important to make sure everybody's in the loop on all of the information coming at them. And there's a lot of information, as we know, in budget season. Okay, so this does require a vote, so I need a motion that the committee vote to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, also under Finance and Operations, it is fiscal year 2023 budget priorities and guidelines discussion. The priorities and guidelines for the next fiscal year will provide the community with information about the school committee's priorities for FY '23 school department budget. It also is designed to provide guidance, the superintendent of schools and school department administration regarding the development of its initial FY '23 school department budget proposal. Ms. Heffernan and Dr. McGee, as I mentioned, are members of the Fiscal Projection Subcommittee. They worked with Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins to develop the draft of the budget guidelines and priorities that are in your booklet and here to discuss today. So we have Mr. Collins and of course, Dr. McGee and Ms. Heffernan as well as part of the discussion. So, Mr. Collins, you want to start or?
Sure, I could start, and then obviously, Dr. McGee or Mrs. Heffernan could add to the discussion. We all met with Dr. Sawyer on October 7th to take a look at a draft document. Again, the purpose of this is, it's intentionally called Priorities and Guidelines for Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Development. It's your guidance to all of us about what's important and what are the assumptions for next school year in developing the budget and the financial resources that will support that. So I would just kind of highlight, I'll just highlight the kind of three priorities that are recommended. And the first is to meet the commitments as detailed in the March 16th, 2021 override statement to the residents of Shrewsbury and agreed upon between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. Again, that's honoring that agreement that was kind of underpinning of the successful Prop 2 and F override question and commitments that came with that. The second priority would be coronavirus planning and resources. Again, we're still in the midst of a pandemic and likely to have that residual impact next school year. Whether or not we're still providing sort of medical updates or not is unknown, but certainly we'll be dealing with, you know, dealing with students who have lost learning and making academic recovery, if you will. And so that's parcel with this coronavirus planning and resources are, it's, you know, both components, if you will, if both, the medical piece is still at play. Thirdly is resources for continued progress towards the fulfillment of the 2018-22 strategic goals. You know, things like that included in that are maintaining class sizes, you know, making sure we've set aside necessary resources to support mental, emotional, behavioral health and social-emotional learning, to consider what investments might advance the district's commitment to its core value of equity and anti-racism. Another component of that element is continued investments in technology. And then providing opportunities for all of our students, regular education, special education, English language learners, all of our students, so that whatever type of specialized education that they need to be successful, that we've incorporated sufficient resources in our operating budget to support that. And then finally, fulfillment of the UMass Collins Center study of the central office organizational structure to help lead this organization into the future. Those are all components of these priorities. And then the assumptions and guidance are kind of pretty typical from prior years in terms of looking at, you know, enrollment and state revenues and other fee-based revenue programs. So I won't go through all of those, but I'm not sure if Dr. McGee or Mrs. Heffernan have other things to add. Do you want to go first?
I think, I thank you, Dr., Mr. Collins. The, I think this flows on our last conversation, right? That we are, we are taking seriously our commitments to stay within the constraints and agreements that we have with the town, with the Board of Selectmen and continue to work with the town manager on that. And that is, that's a new day for us, and I think it's exciting to have it out there, that that's, that we know what the, what the limits are and what that's going to look like. So that certainly makes sense that that is first and foremost. I second the idea that we are in a pandemic and we have to continue to be nimble. And there are things that are changing and evolving and well, whether it's, you know, new lines of funds or ability to how to spend those, still second. And third, not because it is necessarily the thing that we want to have third, but is meaning our strategic priorities, that that is the world that we're currently living in. So I think as laid out by the district, I'm very much in support and hope that we may be able to move, you know, advance the needle on some of those strategic priorities. We already began some discussion about, about a few of those in different ways, but we certainly have to keep our, keep our, keep our lines in check, given, given the agreements that we have with the town at this point in time.
So this is an important place to start. The school budget is the biggest piece by far of the town's budget. It's, the business this town is in is running a school system more than anything else. And school budgets are extremely complicated and very difficult for people to understand. So it's important to have a document like this that provides a simple, quick So it's important to have a document like this that provides a simple, quick framework as to what our priorities are, what our focus is going to be, and they can then hang everything else on it when, you know, finally, the pages and pages of tables and numbers come out in the spring. So I think this is a very important document. I think it's laid out very nicely, and I offer it for your consideration.
Ms. Fritz?
I think this year, we have a little breathing room budget-wise. We know what the parameters are financially, what we can work with, and this document lays out the roadmap of what we need, but I think the difficult part is, where do we spend those dollars within this framework? And I know it's early, but I, we had our planning session with senior leadership last week, and I know most of our tables talked about a need for mental health services and social-emotional services, and I, I think as I sat in that room and listened to what's happening, I think we're, we're in, we need a, to me, we need services in that area, and how do we fulfill that within the COVID, you know, we're going to have a tail from the COVID issues, but we've also had that additional need for a long time. So how do we best spend the dollars that we have to meet these priorities? And that will be the most difficult part. And like you said, this is just the beginning of that, but we do have to make some very wise decisions on those four corners that we know of the, the budget going forward.
Mr. Pouch?
I appreciate the work of my colleagues and Mr. Collins on putting this together. I do support this as a framework. In particular, what I like about this document is, to the extent possible, it reasserts our strategic priorities as part of this conversation. Obviously, COVID safety and our commitments related to the agreement made in relation to the operational override are going to necess, are out of necessity going to need to come first. But the fact of the matter is, this district put a lot of work into developing those strategic priorities. All of the emergencies and crises that have gripped the world over the past year and a half don't change the fact that we, we knew that we had things that we needed to do as a district, and we need to, to the extent possible, let some of those reassert themselves. And some of those issues, we have seen highlighted by the events of the past year and a, year and a half, particularly a number of issues surrounding equity. So I do appreciate in particular, to the extent possible, this document sets us up to look back at our strategic priorities and start to reassert in the conversation some things that we knew all along we were, we were going to need to do for our district.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank my colleagues and Mr. Collins, Dr. Sawyer, for the thought that were put into these priorities. I do support this framework as well. I appreciate, too, that we're laser-focused on the commitments that we made to the residents of the town and the framework that we agreed upon with the Board of Selectmen. So I think it's very important as we move forward into how we do budget planning, obviously, with, to operate within the boundaries of the financial framework that we, that we committed to. So I appreciate all the effort here and having us focus on that, along with response to COVID planning and resources, and then again, the strategic priorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you'll see this again at your next meeting for, for a vote, and if there was something in the interim that, you know, we needed to take feedback on and make some adjustments, it's certainly time to do that between now and your next meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the school committee meeting held on October 6, 2021. Enclosed, any revisions or edits? There being none, they'll be approved as written. Okay, we do have to enter into executive session tonight, so I do need a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, Purpose 7. Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 22F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, or B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Purpose 2, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Mr. Pouch?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you, and good night.